On Tuesday afternoon, August sixth, two thousand twenty-four, and I called this work meeting of the Beltrami County Board of Commissioners to order. Do we have any new employees? Doesn't look like it. Okay. Scott's an old employee. He must not have heard me. Uh, any commissioner have any future meeting work topics? Seeing none, let's move on to Bruce and the county state aid highway eleven speed study.
Good afternoon, commissioners. The first item I have for you is uh, to discuss the potential of doing a speed study. Uh, look at the proper speed limit for Casal eleven Car Lake Road. I did include a map. Uh, this is a short section of Car Lake Road. It is between our our Cassa fifty and uh, trunk highway one ninety-seven, so it's about a mile in length. Um, but first of all, just a little refresher. Uh, as counties, we do not set speed limits. Uh, we cannot arbitrarily go out there and put up a speed uh, limit. Uh, we do get that request a lot, uh, you know, from the public, people are driving too fast past my house, please come put up a speed limit sign. Uh, we cannot just arbitrarily do that. Uh, for county roads, our speed limits is are fifty-five miles per hour unless we get authorization from MinDOT to do uh, something different. And so that's what I'm requesting here is a resolution uh, that the county board would pass. Then the next step in the process is MinDOT would go out there and review that segment. And they would determine what that proper speed limit would be. Part of their process is uh, they actually look at how fast people are traveling. Uh, that is another kind of misnomer about speed limits is again, you don't just throw up a sign and expect everybody to go slower. People already travel what they feel is proper or safe on a road. And so that is a big component or a part of how speed limits are set. Uh, the MinDOT goes out there with radar gun, checks to see what everybody's traveling at, used what is called the eighty-fifth percentile. Uh, because that is uh, has been found, research has shown that if everybody is traveling a uniform speed, then it is safer. Uh, if you think about it, traveling down a road, uh, you're on an interstate cruising along, uh, if you meet a slow vehicle, or you're trying to pass a slow vehicle, or you get buzzed by with a really a speeder, you know, those are unsafe situations. But if everybody's traveling in the same uh, speed, that is a much safer situation. And so that is again, kind of a slower scale, that is what they look at on a road segment is to see what everybody's traveling at and use that to help set the speed limit. Um, and so with this section here, uh, I do believe um, that it could potentially have a a different speed limit than fifty-five. It is only one mile in length. You're you've got a stop condition on both ends, so you're starting from, you know, a lower speed. And by the time you get up to fifty-five, you gotta be quite, you know, into the middle of that section. And then you've got a lot of uh, commercial businesses, side streets, residential area there. So I do think that potentially that there could be a you know, a slower um, average speed of what the traffic is traveling at out there. So I do think that this warrants at least a study to see what uh, what it could be.
Questions for Bruce. Yeah, Craig.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Bruce, uh, what determines which roads and which sections of roads we would inquire about having a speed test done? What what triggered this road and what what do we normally? What what triggers us to go after a speed study on a particular section of road?
Well, we've done it differently over the years. Uh, when I first started here, I went through and looked at where all where we had had studies done. Uh, we did have some signs up that didn't have the proper study behind it. And so um, we did some just based on my recommendation on what I thought uh, were some areas that potentially could or already had signs up. Um, and then from there, uh, nowadays, most of it is is public driven. You know, someone says, I don't, I don't think this feels right out here. And then I guess I I need to concur or believe that it is a warrants uh, a study. And so that's the case here versus, I mean, we just took a request or a complaint from somebody else that said, you know, that people are traveling too fast past my house. And and that one, in my mind, didn't warrant it because it was a uh, three, four, five, three or four mile road section. And they just wanted people to travel slower past their house and putting up a sign is not going to do that. So it was more of there was a initial request, but I I I concur. And so that's why it's here.
And it, the second question, Mr. Chair, uh, is there a cost to the county to have the state do the speed study?
No cost.
Okay. That's it. Thank you.
Go ahead. No, go ahead, Richard.
I've talked to a couple of people out there campaigning, and then I got a call. Possibly referred it to. And uh, and I I I happen to concur too because there's some that. Interesting speed.
And I wasn't against it. I was just wanting to to understand how how that comes about.
Right.
Joe, did you have a?
Yeah, um, this is right where the new jail is going, right?
No, no.
Uh, so this is on the south end of the industrial park.
The Maji Town Hall is on the
Okay.
Like up by Calvert. It's the photographs here.
It's this one?
North Central Door and uh,
The jail going right there?
No, it is there.
Okay. Never mind.
Okay, no other questions? All right. Thanks, Bruce.
I I guess on that topic, um, it is on the regular agenda. To save myself from having to come back at five at five o'clock. Um, will the board consider putting it up on consent agenda or or doing this on its own without be at five o'clock on the regular session?
I need to be here. I I don't have a problem with that. Anyone have a problem with? It it it
Just move on to consent.
So it looks like we'll move it to consent.
Thank you.
Thanks, Bruce. All right. All right, grant updates.
Some good news. The county is gonna receive a couple more grants. Um, this is a new grant opportunity that the state uh, came out with. It is kind of underneath the towards zero death deaths umbrella. Uh, it is a new program and a new grant program that they have out there to help uh, towards uh, uh, those safety causes. And it could be for um, any of the, I'm gonna say, any of the E's, so emergency services, enforcement, engineering. I'm forgetting all the E's here on the spot, but any of those people or and agencies that are involved with towards zero deaths uh, would have the opportunity to apply for this grant. Um, so it was a new grant. Uh, we actually submitted two grants, the sheriff's department submitted one, and then the highway department submitted one. Uh, and we were both selected. Uh, the sheriff's department, they submitted roughly twenty-six thousand dollars for two portable uh, speed dynamic uh, signs, sign trailers. Uh, so we can move them around the county. And these are the ones that'll display, you know, how fast you're going and what the speed limit is. And those do help um, uh, help reduce or make people aware of how fast they're traveling and help reduce speed. Kind of along the same lines, the highway department submitted uh, and received a hundred and twenty thousand dollar grant. Uh, but ours is more for work zone safety. Uh, we have issues with uh, people not paying attention or purposely speeding through work zones. And so uh, we are going to work with the sheriff's department and utilize one of their dynamic speed warning signs, but we also have uh, some other dynamic message board signs, so we can put uh, you know, slow down or work zone ahead. Um, we'll have some of those. Those will go on the back of uh, pickups uh, vehicles. And so then we can they like actually flop down and you flop them up and turn them on. Uh, we also have uh, will receive a a cr- crash attenuating trailer. Uh, so this is a trailer that goes behind a tandem truck. And it is actually in the work zone. So if some errant driver is gonna have come over across into the work zone and potentially hit our workers, they're gonna hit this trailer and actually absorbs the crash of the vehicles so that they're not just running into the back of the the tandem truck. Uh, but it, so it helps uh, kind of reduce the impact of that crash. Um, and so that trailer, the message board signs, and then portable rumble strips. This is a new product that is out there. Um, we can put the these uh, speed humps or speed bumps out across the lane. And this helps the distracted drivers when they're coming up on a the work zone or a traffic uh, control. Um, gets their attention, helps slow down the traffic. And then as that moves down the road, you can pick them up, take them with you and throw them back out. And so they're kind of a uh, rubberized or light rubber uh, material that we can utilize. And so we received grant for all that to help improve our work zone. Our work zones. Now, third topic, the one you've all been waiting for, are you? Every year? Uh, the proposed five-year plan. Uh, I've got to open it up here myself. Uh, on the agenda bill, there is the the color key to help you understand the colors. Uh, all the projects with no, no color is no change. Uh, the yellow is a brand new project since the the five-year plan that was adopted last year. But orange is a project that was in that five-year plan, but it changed uh, the year that it is in. And then gray, gray is what I use to help uh, keep track of our projects that are eligible for the local option sales tax. And so um, part of this also is that local option sales tax. Um, when you look at uh, the projects that are in our five-year plan, there are quite a few that are not grayed out. Um, when we did last did the local option sales tax in two thousand seventeen, we kind of looked out, did our five-year plan plus a guess at the next five years. Um, we are, we're beyond that five years and we're getting into the end of our um, the ten-year list. And so there are quite a few projects that are being looked at in the the five-year plan um, that are not eligible for that sales tax. And so I I guess I'm recommending that uh, this year we uh, consider re-adopting the local option sales tax with a new project list. And so I also, with this draft five-year plan, I have a draft local option sales tax project list. And then it includes uh, the projects that are in the five-year plan. And then projected another five years worth of projects. So again, kind of looking out ten years um, with a potential list of projects. That, that list uh, that I included also has the grayed out ones. And so those are the ones that are in the approved lost list that was approved the last time. So there is still some projects on that list and they'll be in that five-year plan, but then the ones that are white turned action, new ones that would be added to that that list.
Bruce, maybe for the, anyone in the public that's paying attention, if you want to just reiterate what the what the board has to do to re uh, to re-up the half some sales tax or what the requirements are.
Yeah. So when that rule was put into place of the state roughly back in two thousand twelve, thirteen, right around there. Um, it is actually up to the county board. Uh, they approve it through a resolution after a public hearing. And so that's all it takes to approve that local option sales tax to implement it and re- re-implement it is to hold a public hearing and then adopt uh, a resolution that has that list of projects.
And that's once every five years?
You can, you can do it whenever. And so you can do it once and be done. Cause it's just that sales tax is only eligible to be used on those projects. Once those projects are done, then that sales tax would cease.
So we're, are we at the point where this year we have to redo the list and make a resolution?
Well, again, you don't have to. Um, but again, we're, we're getting to the point in our five-year plan where we don't have projects, you know, five years out um, that are eligible for that, for the sales tax.
So it can wait till next year or whatever.
Wait till next year, it could be done whenever.
Any requirement, wouldn't do it this year though either.
Sure, okay.
No, I agree. I think it would.
We would want to just do it so we have that. You know, so it's obvious that we have the the project list out there to to keep that that half, seven percent sales tax in play. You know, and uh, that people don't get the wrong idea that it's going to go away because we don't have any more products.
Right. And I, and I think when we were on the trail to sell this idea, we had like eighty million, didn't we, uh, of roads that at that point was going to cost eighty million to bring them up out of the uh, poor category to average or good. And I'm not sure if we're that much closer to a goal or not. But I know that there's a lot of people that have had roads improved that would not have had improved without the sales tax. So there's a lot of outline roads that are still hard to drive on.
Yeah, when we when these five-year plans have have been developed since then, so since two thousand thirteen and all the way through, the the sales tax has been uh, and there's nothing in writing, but they have been earmarked towards improving the bad roads. Really to help show that it's being used to help improve our system. Where our existing county state aid dollars and county road dollars are used to help keep our roads in good shape. So the mill and overlays in type uh, such that our system as a whole keeps where it's at and it improves. And so that those, again, that sales tax dollars really is um, improving our system and addressing those bad roads out there.
So are you thinking, oh, go ahead, Craig.
Um, Bruce, in the past, you have done kind of a projection that showed uh, it was but was green for the for the good roads and and yellow and red and showed kind of where where we've trended. And I think the last time the red actually went up a bit, some of the bad roads that were in yellow went to to red, but the green had been continuing to to move up. So incrementally more of our roads are in much better shape, I I believe. Um, is, do you have that in the works to to show to us or not? Or is that something you could could put together or is it a lot of work?
So I would have uh, given that, I believe in the spring, uh, kind of the state of the system. Um, we get our roads uh, reviewed every two years. And so that is truly when the data is gonna show differently. Right now, our roads would have been rated this year. So they get rated in twenty-two, twenty-four, twenty-six. And so next spring, I guess, is when I would be able to show that with new data. Right now, I would still be using twenty, twenty-two data, but.
Thank you.
Uh, any other questions for? Yeah, go ahead, Joe.
Uh, I'm looking on page two uh, twenty twenty-eight. My screen is blurry and I can't make out what it says, but I do see roundabout. Uh, where's that intersection?
Uh, that is the uh, six and eleven intersection. So that is uh, Fifth Street, Fifteenth Street and Adams. Uh, that is the project that we received the the federal grant for here recently to help do that roundabout at that intersection.
It didn't say Roosevelt and one ninety-seven.
Any other?
That is a good spot for a roundabout.
Yeah, well, twenty thirty doesn't show up on here.
The, kind of the longer ten-year list of projects. I guess uh, but it's kind of showing it on that local option sales tax list. Cause you you'll have the five-year plan, then kind of a projected uh, another five years worth of projects that are on the radar. And so those are it is.
All right.
Very good.
Right alongside Lakewood Drive.
Yeah. Right at the bottom.
So Bruce, is it your uh, wish that uh, yet at at an upcoming board meeting, we would pass that res- a resolution to that effect with these a list and?
But I would say the the process would be is uh, we would take a road tour uh, this fall. We can see the road construction and some of these roads that are in the five-year plan and the bad roads. Um, but the actual adoption of the five-year plan and the local option sales tax all be lumped in together when the budget is approved. So what we've done in the the recent years is have one public meeting on the budget, the five-year plan, then we can include the the sales tax at the same time.
Perfect, okay. Any other questions for Bruce? Anything else you have on that for us, Bruce?
Um, no, I guess the, again, the highlights, just take a look at that five-year plan. Um, looking at the the yellow, the new projects. Um, it's really kind of the the changes in there. And uh, we, I had, my overall summary, um, kind of to Craig's question there, our road system is improving overall. Uh, when you look out there, the five years and then even further into that ten years. Um, we are getting to most of the bad roads that we've had on our list. Uh, we are actually going to be hopefully be able to go and widen some of these narrow roads that we uh, resurfaced. When we got going on some of these bad roads early on, um, the it was decided to worry about the surface, resurface them, uh, even though they were a narrow road and the actual proper project should have been a complete reconstruction. But we prioritize the surface. And so now, again, looking out ten years, looks like hopefully we should be able to come back and start doing some widening projects. Uh, so uh, thirty going east out of Black Duck, uh, five north out of Pinewood. Um, we've got some narrow roads like that, that uh, should be. Um, the third one would be fifteen that we just uh, resurfaced here last year uh, from like what Deb's coming south. Um, those are three roads that are, should be looked at to be widened in the future. So looking out ten years, hopefully we can actually get to them. So in my mind, that's a positive that uh, our surfaces hopefully will be uh, mostly green and yellow, uh, good and um, uh, conditioned in the future, and we can get to some of these actual better uh, improvement projects.
So maybe just one more comment from a constituent of Richards that got ahold of me just because they knew me. It in the washboard road on Balsam. There's anything that you can do about that, that I'm sure they would appreciate that.
Yep, yeah, if you look at the the lost list, it's it gets in there. That's
Okay.
We got some of those routes that we've inherited, the the Lakewood, the Balsam, and you know, those um, were township roads and will need some improvements also, so.
And I'd like to say that someone was out there grading at about seven or seven thirty this morning.
Yeah, there you go.
I'd say for the time being, maybe blade it more often or something like that, but seeing how much traffic. Um, just curious, I'm just looking at, you know, to see if there are any sneaky uh, HSI projects. There's one that I can't read on the twenty twenty-six uh, um, that
It's past my house.
Something supports.
Mailbox support.
Mailbox support. Oh, okay.
Yep, that was uh, again, a recent federal grant that we got. I brought that one to the board here.
I agree, but that first word was so teeny, came with the tears. So, but most of the rest of it looks like county wide ed scraping and stuff like that for the um, incentive line rubbles and that. No, no surprises with the I have a safety improvement project stuff.
Nope, the uh, the only sneaky one to that point would be next year is the actual plan itself. Uh, I I talked to the board about that, that we had got a federal grant to redo our our county road safety plan. Uh, the feds call it an action plan. Um, but we got a grant to completely redo that. And uh, so that is the opportunity. Uh, the last time we did it, you know, the commissioners were part of that process or were invited to be part of that process. And that is when, again, there's the big book of ideas or projects, uh, solutions. And that is the, that is truly the opportunity to say, no, we don't want to do these types of projects. Then they're not uh, a solution that we would use. And so we will, we will have that opportunity to to not just for us, but for others to kind of weigh in on the the types of projects that we we uh, consider.
When, when is that?
Um, it's a federal, it's a federal grant, and so that process is really slow.
Okay, so you're next year or something?
Yeah.
Okay.
We're still waiting, still waiting for the grant agreement to from the feds to show up, so.
Thank you.
Anybody have anything else for Bruce? All right, thanks, Bruce.
Thank you.
Airport joint powers agreement. Katie, would you like to come to the podium, please? I I talked to Kyle and he said he was coming, but he said three forty. I said, you better be here at three thirty.
It's why I'm always early. And it's not every day. I get to bring really good news too.
Ah, yeah, I already got that.
Waiting for Kyle to get here, though. But first, let's start with the airport, joint airport zoning.
Yeah.
Not zoning, Jiminy Christmas. This is what I have on my brain. Um, joint airport powers agreement. So any questions based on the edits that were made after the joint meeting between the city and the county? I worked really closely with Brent and Sam. We had language going back and forth a lot. But this was something both Brett and Sam can live with, but it also doesn't tie the hands that the airport has to come for every single project, which was one of the things we wanted to make sure was really clear. Um, and so hopefully it's most of the projects that are going to affect it are going to be coming through the city anyway. We're going to be getting heads ups through PUDs, um, CUPs, all of that. So hopefully it's not too big of an issue, but it's just one more to make sure everything's great.
And I guess I'll just start by saying thank you for all your work on this. It's been very much appreciated. I especially being in an airport authority member, it was really appreciated. Um, any questions for Katie regarding the joint powers agreement?
What was the most contentious area? What what section was that that you were referring to?
It was the main change we made based on the discussion was on the subdivision. It involved coming back for the developments. Subdivision eight, Perrin four in regards to economic development. So that if there's an economic development that way may enter, may affect the aquifer that is underneath the airport, that then it would come to both the county's environment director of environmental services and the city's public work to director. If there's a question about whether or not it does affect it, and they would make the decision together whether or not it does. If it does, then it needs to come to the county board and the city council for approval before it can move forward.
Sounds like a pretty reasonable solution. Any questions about that specific one that Tim?
Oh, Mr. Chair, I guess uh, I think it was at the last meeting, I asked if uh, the county attorney reviewed any of this, and I haven't heard if the county attorney reviewed or not, so.
And I had sat down with the county attorney, he had gotten copies of all of it, I've kind of walked through it with Mr. Hanson as well. Um, so we had spoken through all of it, obviously not the quick changes that were agreed to, um, by both the city and county. Just, was it last week, two weeks ago? Within that, because that was just very quick as it was already approved by the city and just throwing in those extra languages of the if there's a confusion or not an agreement about whether or not the aquifer would be affected, otherwise all the rest of it. It's been sent to the county attorney, I can't speak to whether or not he's read it, but I did walk through it and we did speak about it.
Um, is there anything, Katie, now that we know that the custom zoning has been approved? We, we have the wording in there or a custom zoning ordinance says that should be changed?
Well, technically it's not fully done yet.
That's right, because we still have to public hearing.
Oh, yeah.
But we have the, we, we don't need any more public hearings, I don't think, off the look in, and there's more, because this still needs to be approved by all the other entities and it needs to get put in, so we're not quite there yet. So, and there's still a lot more, and then if anything happens, and let's say we decide we don't like custom airport zoning. I don't know why we want, but it may happen. Ultimately, that doesn't mean we have to come back and change this agreement again. There's the caveat that if it's never, that if for some reason it's not there, or let's say hypothetically, a court throws it out. We have a caveat to fall back to.
Any other questions for Katie about that?
For Chair?
Yes.
Um, are there any other examples in here, having a hard time finding them? Of where something would still need city and or county approval? Other than the one we just talked about? Couple of minutes ago.
Trying to remember.
Authority itself would.
Obviously dissolutions, amendments, any changes to the joint powers agreement? Um, otherwise they have the power to levy if they want more money than what they're getting from their levy. They have the right to come to the city and the county and request more funds. But that would obviously be at the city and the county's decision of whether or not to do that. Um, otherwise, obviously any property that they buy, even with FAA funds, it's jointly owned by the city and the county fifty fifty. It's not owned by the airport authority, they cannot own property pursuant to this agreement. Um, and that's really actually by statute, they don't want them owning property. So they don't have to come back to ask for approval to buy property. But ultimately, if they wanted to sell property, they, I don't know that they would have the rights, I haven't looked into it, because we've never really sold property, we don't sell property. Um, but ultimately we would have to do a lot of work and it wouldn't be up to the airport authority to sell the property because it belongs to the city and the county. It'd be a lot of land releases and things like that, which is a lot of fun with the FAA.
Let's, let's invite the executive director of the airport to come forward. We're a little ahead of schedule, Kyle. That's why I called and said maybe it better be three thirty. Any, uh, any further questions for either Katie or Kyle?
Sure, just wondering as far as the, you know, so we've got it on the agenda to pass tonight. Um, and that's just so that it can have a public hearing?
Correct, the county already, or the city already passed this. Um, once it's passed by the county, then it goes back to the airport authority, whose meeting is next week, so as soon as it passes tonight, we'll get it on the agenda. Next week. Week after first, okay, I, I don't know what week it is, I've been a week ahead all week. Um, then we can set, the authority can set a public hearing. Once the authority has a public hearing, then the city and the county together have to have a joint public hearing. So, once we get that completed, then we'll you'll get a nice lovely another memo from me as to what we've heard at the public hearing. So you'll have that information, I would highly recommend come to the public hearing. Even though, I mean, we can have Diane notice that you'll all be there. And you can sit and you can listen, otherwise watch it on Zoom. And just get that information, otherwise we'll try to do the best we can and summarizing it in a memo as well.
For Chair?
Yes.
I wonder about the, uh, uh, airport authority commission members themselves and who serves on it? I kind of wonder about the idea of, um, having the county commissioner that has the airport in his or future hers district, um, would be the one to serve on the authority and then similarly the city council, this is up to them of course, uh. But I think it would make sense that the ward two person serve on that. Um, or the at large person. Or, um, and for the county board. Um, I'd even be open to, uh, the, the county board chair or the county commissioner who's district the airport is in. Uh, it's kind of the, I kind of thought of this for the first time the other day, otherwise I would have brought it up at the joint meeting, but um, just kind of wondering what others think about that.
And my thought is that the airport serves the entire county and community at large and, but where it physically resides is not, not like they're a constituent in and of themselves. You know, if they were a constituent or something, then I could maybe see that, but it's a, it's a you know, an organization, not somebody that is, you know, per se voting for you.
Right, but there's people working in, in that commissioner's district after the airport.
Then they might be from other commissioner districts.
They might be from Hubbard County.
Yeah.
There's not a requirement that I'm aware of, uh, that you have to live in Beltrami County or the city of Bemidji to be, uh, an employee, correct, Kyle?
There's not, no. No, but there are requirements that, uh, require, um, a, a person live in the city if they serve on a city committee or a person live in the county, if they live on a co- they have, serve on a county committee, this is kind of in that realm. And arguably, uh, my district, District Two, which is now part of the airport. I think it would make sense for the District Two Commissioner to be the one to serve since it's in their district. You know, it's not a hill I'm willing to die on right now, I mean, nobody has to be personally offended about it or anything, but, um, because I would, if we did make that change, I'd be happy if you served out the rest of the year and if you're the board chair next year and it's the board chair can do it too, I'd be fine with that too, but um, I just think it makes a lot of sense and, uh, worthy of discussion. So, um, again, I'm, uh, curious as to what the other commissioners might think about that as well.
Okay, uh, Mr. Chair. Um, I guess my feeling has been, since I've been on the board, that this is just another committee that we have to fill, an obligation to fill. And with any of the others, we've kind of said, well, I'd like that committee someday. You know, or if you're willing to step back or take one of mine and I take yours, and it's kind of that system. And I, and I guess I think it served us well. Especially if you start to get some knowledge about that particular committee, sometimes it, it makes sense that someone's there for six years or whatever. So.
That's actually why I originally got on that committee was because of the, the two commissioners that were on it, were both for sure not going to be on it. And moving forward, so that's how I took some continuity, some, some kind of continuity. That's, uh, that's why I got on it in the first place, so that we'd have some kind of institutional knowledge moving forward.
Tim, you have some thoughts?
Uh, yes, Mr. Chair, so I, I was thinking the same, you know, as, as Commissioner Gould. Uh, to me, it would, my, my opinion, it would make sense that it would be the commissioner who's, who's ever district that was in. Um, and also, I mean, as, as Commissioner Gosby alluded to, that the airport serves the entire county. So, when it comes to assignments, I mean, it was something that I've always wanted to, um, pursue, but having been fortunate enough to, to, uh, uh, receive that committee assignment, so I mean, if it serves the entire county, it would make sense to me that we all get, you know, familiar with it, uh, learn a little bit more about it, you know, because I mean, prior to, uh, a few weeks ago, I, I didn't know really much about, you know, the airport and I've been on, uh, the county board for quite some time, you know, so I mean, I think it would be helpful if, uh, we had that opportunity to, you know, pursue, you know, other committee assignments that, that really do have an impact on, uh, the entire county, so. I, I would, I would be open to, to that suggestion, so that's my thoughts, thank you.
So I would just conclude by saying I think it would be, um, it would be difficult to try to tie the hands of a J P A with that kind of restriction, I think that that could be taken up within the county board. Uh, at a later date to decide who's going to be those two commissioners, but to tie it into a J P A, I think it makes it very cumbersome from a legal standpoint, uh, would you want to comment on that?
And I was going to have the same recommendation that I wouldn't put it in the joint powers agreement. But quite honestly, if the city council makes the decision that they're going to have this particular seat take that position always, or the county board decides that this, whoever has this particular ward or zone is going to be always get on the airport commission, that's something that you get to decide for yourself. And if you make that decision and then you decide, you know what, that isn't working out well, then you don't have to come back and change the joint powers agreement, which is pretty cumbersome.
Yeah.
So, it's, you still have the flexibility and you can still make those decisions within the body itself. But then you're not also asking for the city council's approval to make that change.
That makes sense. Okay, so rather than making it cumbersome at this point, uh, move on with that thought. Uh, any other questions? I think that wraps it up, we're going to be taking it up at five o'clock and, or maybe five oh five, maybe?
I got one more thing, I am here now.
Oh, that's right, that's right, that's right, now that Kyle's here, yeah, yeah.
You know, I got to break the bad news to Commissioner Gosbig that I was right.
Hey, I'd like to set expectations, under promise over deliver.
But we received word today at approximately one o'clock. The commissioner of the Department of Transportation officially approved custom airport zoning on the first submittal. I don't know that that's ever happened. So Jasper should be really proud of themselves. Because we, they did a fantastic job and they have a really, really great product to come out with, I think it's really easy to understand. And it does what the airport needs it to do, no more, no less. And we real, they really took a good look at what do we really need to accomplish? And what do we really need for safety? So the commissioner recognized all that hard work. And it's right here in the proof is in the pudding, so that is super awesome and you should all be really, really proud of all the work that's been done.
So maybe Katie, for the public's purposes that are listening in, can you explain the next steps before this actually becomes final?
Yes, the next steps are, it is actually going to go to all of the bodies of the Jasper individually. So it'll come to the county, it'll come to the city, it'll come to all the townships that are members of Jasper. And it needs to actually pass as an ordinance there. So it'll follow the city's or three reading ordinance process, it'll follow the county's ordinance process, because it needs to be enveloped in that. And then it becomes the airport.
Is there, is there, there's no more public hearings then?
I don't believe so, I'm not remembering anymore.
Yeah, I don't think so, only if they were to prove it, then we would have to have another public hearing.
Got it.
Correct, and I think what's also really, really important to understand is I thought if we were going to have it kicked back with some changes, the only changes would be because we have the first and only helicopter zone in the state of Minnesota. To where we have a specific zone from the airport, Sanford Medical Center, that is basically ensuring that the heli, the medical helicopters have a clear and safe path in any type of weather, so they're not going to be obstructed by antennas or anything that's above seventy five feet. So, we were like, okay, if anything comes back, it's from that. Nope, they, they were comfortable with it, so Beltrami County, city of Bemidji, the Bemidji Regional Airport is the only one in the state of Minnesota. And really, I think maybe even in the country, I know we did a lot of research, that has a helicopter zone.
I think that actually probably helped us, actually, because it showed that we were thinking very, you know, globally and, and not just in a small box, we were looking at all safety aspects, not just, you know, this, these land pieces.
Yeah, so it's, we're almost there, we're faster than we thought we were going to be.
So the next step will be the airport authority will take that up, the Jasper will take that up, uh, and then after that, it'll go out to the L G Us.
Correct, we'll have one more meeting just because I think we all deserve gold stars and cookies. Yeah, we do though, it, it was a lot of work and there was a lot of hard work and a lot of compromise that went on and that should be commended, so.
Any questions for Katie or Kyle on the airport zoning? Thank you very much, appreciate all your work, thank you.
Thank you, thanks.
Is Brent in the room?
Was.
He may, he may have thought we were going to be on schedule instead of ahead of schedule. Here he comes. So next up is our discussion on the cannabis ordinance. And with that, we'll have, uh, our environmental services director Brent Rude come forth.
We're ahead. I'm looking surprised, okay. I would have loved it, no, I'm just kidding.
Good timing then, I guess.
Great timing.
Um, are, I'm assuming we're on the cannabis ordinance discussion?
Yep.
Right, okay, sorry, I just walked in, uh, Brent Rude, environmental services director. Uh, the goal of this kind of, um, session agenda item is to have some conversation, discussion surrounding the um, cannabis re, um, retail business ordinance, um, in Beltrami County and we have some time to make some decisions, the planning commission is going to be working on this. But I thought it would be helpful to all of us involved if we could have some conversation today and, and let the board give at, at your discretion some, um, sideboards or some direction or some policy, um, things that you would like to see in the, in the ordinance as the planning commission and our department works through some things and, and moves forward. Um, I understand and, and I think everybody understands at this point that this is a kind of a, a unique scenario in ordinance creations where some of the rules are still changing, and so we, we might be headed down a road today that we need to switch lanes and maybe turn direction i- in another month or so, but we're going to do what we can and, um, with good faith efforts moving forward, trying to get everything, uh, on track. I know there's some additional training opportunities that are coming up, um, I'm like on Friday, for example, I'm going to another webinar that I'm sure I'll learn some new things that I didn't know today. Um, it seems like every time I open an email and there's something kind of new, but, um, I, I made a kind of a bullet point, talking point list, um, do you guys, would you guys want this? For, just to see, should I hand this out to you guys?
Yeah.
These are at least some of the, um, ideas or topics that we should at least cover or could cover.
The first one I have on there is, uh, almost an education piece, just for, I know for me, this has been really confusing when I first started hearing about some of these cannabis, um, rules was registration and certification were two terms that were used and I wasn't quite sure what they meant, um, at the beginning and I don't, I, I get this question a lot, like what does that mean? And, um, I just trying to clarify it, from what I understand, registration is going to be required at the local level, so I equate it to like tobacco and liquor license registrations. Um, this won't be a choice, this, every local government by statute is required to do this. Um, we will be doing registrations of cannabis businesses, there's in statute, there are some fees and limits that for the fees and things like that. So that will happen. I'm assuming, I've, I've talked to Leela Roth from the License Center, they, she handles the liquor license, um, tobacco license stuff sales, and most of that comes from the state, there's a license list and she sends stuff out, gets renewal fees and then brings it. And most of that comes from the state. There's a license list and she sends stuff out, gets renewal fees and then brings it to county board for authorization or approval to, to issue those annually. Um, I'm assuming this would be something similar to that scenario. And then certification is, is actually something that the state is gonna ask the local governments to do to basically just saying that there, the local government is gonna certify to the state that this proposed business is in compliance with zoning regulations that are in effect at the local government level. So this is where the zoning or environmental services would get involved at the state level in letting them know which businesses are um certified in compliance and which ones aren't. And then they'll be issuing permits to the ones that are certified. And so um how, depending on what type of ordinance we adopt, that process will be um a little longer or a little shorter. Um, and I'll kind of explain a little more later. And then the next thing I just wanted to touch on was inspections and compliance checks. So the way I read it, the statute requires the local government units to conduct compliance checks at least one time a year. And those are basically just age verification checks. So I'm not sure if that's different than liquor and tobacco sale compliance checks. It seems like it might be slightly different. Like it's more clearly laid out that they have to do this at least annually. So I'm not a hundred percent sure on if that's different or not. But then getting into the number of businesses allowed. Um, kind of jumping right into the, the meat of the question. When I left uh some of the county board conversations the last time, I was under the impression that the county board probably was in support of um limiting the number of businesses allowed to the, to the smallest number possible. And I just wanted to kind of um either confirm that or have, however you guys want to handle that. Um, confirm that or have discussion about it, or what are the pros and cons or whatever, however you want to do that. If you, if you don't want to do that, I'm, I'm probably gonna uh direct the planning commission to move forward with that as the um assumption, but an opportunity, I guess, for.
Thoughts about number of licensed businesses? Anybody have any particular thoughts that they want to share with Bruce at this time? I'm sorry.
Bruce is gone already, right?
I'm sorry. I got up way too early this morning. Uh, Richard, go ahead.
I, I guess, to me, we're a bit premature for some of this. We're just kind of all shooting in the ballpark. Uh, I'd rather take some time and make sure that other uh bodies of government that are working on this and, and that's coordinated with the state's requirements. Um, I think that's gonna be a lot of our dictation. And, and I know some of that's laid out. At least today, maybe tomorrow will look different. So uh I, I, I don't know how we would know how many. I would prefer less than more personally until this gets off and running. It's kind of to me, I look at the equating it to the liquor license and that type of thing. And you know, that started off pretty small and it's gotten bigger along the way. So.
And maybe this is just a offering, I guess, is um if, if the county, and I do realize that it's kind of a a tough fastball to hit right away, the first pitch of the game. It's a, it's one of those, it's a big question that needs to be answered and talked about. And so if you, if you don't want to provide direction, I'm just gonna maybe move forward with the assumption that you want to limit it to a, to the least, smallest number possible. And, and knowing that the county board can always change that if they want to later. The reason I, I kind of, I don't know if I mentioned this to you guys in a meeting or not, but um I, I know that there's a lot of other counties that are planning to, or at least talking about limiting it to the lowest number possible. And the state, and thi- this is just some of the stuff I've heard in um county planning and zoning circles. I've heard some conversations about this and my impression is that the state put that allowance in there to limit it to those numbers. Because there was some work done on what could the market support for successful businesses. And, and that kind of was the generally agreed upon number of, of what the market could support. And um what you'll look, what you'll see, if you look in other states that have done this already. Uh Colorado and California are probably the two biggest examples of places where um they call it the green rush, where businesses and investments went in and they were um there were lots and lots of businesses that opened up and business sales were booming, especially during the beginning of the pandemic when everybody had stimulus checks and stayed at home. And then sales crashed and businesses started failing and businesses started going bankrupt and investments started going um under and taxes weren't being paid and um lots of businesses closed. And then it's just a kind of a blight on the neighborhoods where some of these businesses have closed now. And so I know minute, my impression was Minnesota's goal was to allow local governments to um wade into this a little bit smarter maybe and try to prevent some of those catastrophic failures of initial rush and then crash. But um.
Correct.
Yeah. Thanks, Mr. Chair. Um Brent, uh I'm in favor of limiting it to, to the the minimum that we are required to. However, from some of my reading and the, you know, the cannabis planning and zoning in Minnesota, you know, the AMC put out in April and and that there were some scenarios in there. And it gave a scenario where like in our situation where we have if we limited it to four, which is the minimum that we're allowed to as a county, uh and say the city of Bemidji um had their own ordinance and they, they wanted to allow two, but we had already given out three and the rest of the county. They could deny, it said they could deny the second one that they would, might want to issue in the city of Bemidji. However, it didn't say that they had to deny it. So, so it sounds to me like even though we limit it to four, it's possible that other jurisdictions that haven't um given their, their jurisdictional power to the county could still allow more than that, even though it's within the county boundaries. Is that what you're reading?
That's exactly how I understand it as well. The cities would maintain their authority unless they choose to give that to the county.
Right.
And the city, I mean, I'll just use Bemidji as an example. The city of Bemidji could choose to be unlimited. And they could issue a hundred business licenses or however many people wanted to do it. And, and that would be within their local government right to do that. Um, the, if the county had a limit of four, the city could also, you know, four of them were issued outside of the city, sorry. Um, the city could choose to not allow anymore because the county as a whole has reached their maximum. Um, there's some discussion around that right now, but the, that's what the general guidance has been from the state.
That's what I, that's the way I read it. So thank you for clarifying that.
Yeah.
So, you know, we, we often hear about the city of Bemidji. But do you know what the intentions of Black Duck or Kelly or because they're wonky, you know, their, their, their cities as well. So I mean, are we communicating with them to figure out, you know, what, what their thoughts are, what their plans are, you know, because I would I would hate that, you know, we, the county, you know, do what we do and then the city do what they, the cities do what they do. You know, I, I feel like we, we need to be a little bit coordinated in our efforts. Uh, you know, I I, I don't want to limit, but then, you know, I mean, I, you know, because I, I support, you know, you know, entrepreneurs, you know, people that want to go into business, but I also want to make sure that we're not, you know, uh restricting them or, 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 or setting them up to fail, uh things like that. So I just think it's important that we, you know, keep in constant communication with, with all of our cities, you know. I mean, cause we have what, twelve thousand? There's one license per twelve thousand.
For twelve thousand five hundred.
So the county could realistically do five or three, four.
At the lowest number.
Yeah. So I mean, if, if the county says, okay, well, we're just gonna do four. But then this Bemidji does, okay, well, we'll do eight. So I mean, it's like. So where does that?
No, that's a good question, Tim. Uh, I'll tell you, I just started reaching out to cities recently. Um, uh, when I have time, I'm trying to email or phone calls to some of these small cities. They don't have uh staff in a city hall always. So um, I just got an email back from the clerk at the Kellyer. And she said, you know, from her understanding, she said that they, she, I don't want to put words in her mouth. Um, she's under the impression that the city of Kellyer is gonna defer to the county, similar to they do for liquor and tobacco licenses. Um, I haven't talked to anybody else specifically about that or asked that question yet. Um, I'm speculating when I, but I will be reaching out to everybody. I, I told her that nothing at this point is necessary for like Kellyer. At some point, we should probably come and talk to them and the city council about what that really means. And if they want to do that, then there's a resolution they would want to pass to delegate that authority to the county. Um, we'll do that with every city, but I uh, I didn't want to do that too early because without knowing how the county is gonna address it, some of those cities might want to change their answers based on how the county decides to go forward. So um, but yes, we'll, we're in communication. We will be with all of them.
Richard, uh Brent. If the county limits to four and the city, uh cities limit to five or six, uh the tribes can still come in and set up their businesses wherever they, they choose to do that. Is that correct?
That's the way I understand it.
Numbers of them.
Yeah, we're not, I'm not sure about a number. I haven't heard any solid numbers yet. But the way I understand it is the tribes and the states will be entering into these compact agreements where each tribe will be granted X number of um business licenses and they can place them in whatever jurisdictions they would like to. Uh, my, my thought or my, my initial impression is that they would still have to meet whatever requirements are in place in that local government as far as, you know, if, if we say that they can't be within five hundred feet of a school or whatever that number is, then they would have to comply with those as well. But
Compliance checks.
Yep. But they would, um, the only thing that they would really be exempt from is the limit to the number of businesses that would be allowed. Is the way I understand that.
I, I guess I think we need to put it all on the table because, you know, you could say we're gonna have eight or ten.
But there might be twenty.
Or twenty-five. So, okay.
Joe?
Oh, I just wanted to say I, I would support the minimum at, at this point, but also open to more. I mean, this is jobs, this is revenue. Um, so I'm fine with the minimum for now, but if there's a conversation for uh later, you know, open to more as well.
Yeah, I think this seems like it's just the opposite of what the state normally does. Normally, they allow local jurisdictions to be more restrictive than the state laws. And this is like, they're saying, they're making it the opposite. And that because, you know, if it's a, if it's a impervious surface on, you know, um, the state rule is twenty-five percent impervious surface for your shoreline. And uh we could make it fifteen percent if we want in a township or something, which some have. But in here, where they're saying it absolute minimum that we can do. And then it can go all across the boards from there. Cause if, if these towns, am I correct, you know, if Kellyer doesn't delegate their authority, then it would be unlimited. And they could have as many as they want in, in the city of Kellyer.
My understanding is by default, they, if they don't delegate to the county and they don't adopt an ordinance limiting it, it would be unlimited.
Right. So that even though the county as a whole has said four, the city of Kellyer could end up with ten of them if they wanted.
Yeah. If they, if they haven't officially delegated their authority over to the county, then they don't fall under the county's limit of four.
And I think that actually goes to even townships, doesn't it?
Townships aren't included.
They're not? Okay. I thought I read that in there. But it's just towns and municipalities. Okay.
Yeah. Um, the, the way I understand it is the, the cities are gonna be likely to defer authority to the counties in those scenarios where they're small towns, just because they don't have those systems or a staff in place to do those, the, the business requirements of those anyways. So they're probably going to defer to the county on most of those for the really small towns. But the um like Black Duck's an interesting one where Black Duck has some staff and it's a, it's not a tiny little city. So they, they could choose to do their own thing. And if anybody wants to for um any practical reasons of their own, they could choose to maintain that and do that. So.
Uh, so question I had Brent was knowing full well that the city probably is going to allow at least some minimum, you know, one, two, whatever. Um, knowing full well that Red Lake Nation, maybe even White Earth Nation, maybe even Leaf Lake Nation may want to have a store in town. Um, I, it just seems to me if we're, if we're and I'm, I'm with everybody else, stay with the minimum as possible. But is there a way when we do the ordinances to make sure that people in the northern part of the county don't always just have to drive to Bemidji? I mean, is there, is there a way that we construct ordinances to say, well, if we have to have minimums, can we at least maybe have one up in Black Duck or whatever, just to give some options about moving around the county? Instead of always being Bemidji centric.
Yep. I, I did think about that as well. Um, I think there's a way we could do that where we could, you know, say for discussion sake, let's say we limited it to six. It was, you know, we'd say um maximum of four in the southern half of Beltrami County or define that area geographically. But we're holding specifically two additional ones in the north or one additional one in the north somewhere, however we wanted to do that. I think we would get ourselves in trouble if we started limiting it to four and required them to be geographically distributed. Because then we would be kind of placing um extreme limits that are not realistic and not capable of being met would be somebody's argument. So.
Any other thoughts for Brent on like numbers? I guess. So it seems like there's kind of right now, there's seems to be a consensus of let's go into this with minimums, knowing full well that we can always expand if we want to.
Yep. And I'm, I'm kind of reading into this a little bit, maybe more than I should, but it, just to clarify. When I talk about these minimum numbers so far, we've just been talking about retail businesses. We haven't been talking about any manufacturing or cultivation or any of those other types of businesses. And I don't know. Yeah, I don't know if we're gonna have a lot of demand for that up here. I think that's gonna be more of a populated area, but um, but who knows? Uh, the manufacturing and cultivation, to me, I haven't heard as much discussion about limiting numbers. That's more of a um investment and, you know, resource opportunity. So.
Does that fall under the same general statute if we limit four? And the, we, we have to allow at least four combined retail and manufacturing cultu- cultivation or not?
It's, it says specifically retail. I was trying to find information about cultivation and manufacturing and I couldn't find anything that specifically pulled that out and separated them. So I'm not sure how that works.
Cause I think there's a limit on the number of plants an individual resident can do and stuff. So I would assume that there's something on a business side of it. What they, you know, if you get above certain, then you have to have a license for it. I don't know.
Yeah, they have different license categories for different size manufacturing and different size cultivation. So they, I don't remember what the breakdowns are, but it's like mezzo business and micro business and full scale business. It gets uh, it gets pretty detailed when they talk about dry weight of edible flowers that are produced and stuff. So.
You had some, some things on the, the agenda bill that uh, you know, some bullet points on the agenda bill. Um, you know, location, I would, I would want to see it maximize the distances that are allowed by law from schools, daycares, those kinds of places. Um, and uh, you know, we don't have zoning as a county. Um, the city has zoning, they could, they can do what they want to do with, as far as the state of Bemidji. I don't believe that. I don't know that if Black Duck has any zoning, but um, or any of the other cities in our county. Um, could you explain the difference between conditional use permit and interim use permit that you had as a bullet item? Uh, I, you know, if a conditional use permit just puts conditions on it and it's, it's an indefinite amount of time. And if interim is, is a, is setting a definite amount of time where they have to reapply for their license, if, if that's how it is or?
Exactly how it is. An interim use permit, the planning commission would establish a length of time, a duration of time. And it would be non-transferable. So, you know, the interim use permit could be ten years, it could be two years, it could be one year. And, and they're non-transferable generally. Uh, conditional use permits uh usually stay with the property. It's usually a property right that stays there and it's permanent as long as it hasn't been taken away by some violation or um grievous act by the, by the owner of property where it was removed. So.
So does that mean if, when they sell a business, is that why they do it that way? So, so party A comes in, buys from party B and party A automatically gets it?
And a conditional use permit scenario. Yep.
Okay. So that, that's something that you feel is up to us to decide that you think that the state would allow an interim use permit?
I think so. I, I think the, I mean, that's some of the conversation I've heard at the planning and zoning level. Is that interim use permits have been loaded out there as an option. Um, I guess everybody, or my impression at least is that the county has to issue those permits if there's not a reason to deny it.
Okay.
So it's not one where um So it's not one where um a planning commission could say we don't like cannabis businesses and we're not going to issue this permit. Or there would have to be some very good, well substantiated reason why they would deny something.
Is that, is that an opportunity for us to recoup some revenue on the, on the inspections and stuff like that we have to do by? If we did make it an interim use permit where we, they'd have to reapply and pay for the, the permit again or not?
Potentially, um, I'm always skeptical of that just because I know public hearings for the planning commission and those costs of doing that generally um exceed what we take in in those permit revenues. So unless those permits were really expensive, it probably would be a losing proposition.
Uh, other bullets, Mr. Chair, other bullets that uh you had on here, hours of operation, that it sounds like it's um legal legitimate for us to, to limit the hours of operation. Um, you know, I would throw out just a, an idea of making it the same as liquor stores. You know, like from ten, ten to ten, I think there.
Yeah, the state statute has a again, I didn't put everything in here, but the state statute has a, a window where local governments can choose and you can't restrict it further than
Oh.
a certain window, but the state is also restricting it above that certain window. So I, I think the liquor store timeframe works.
Could work.
I think so.
That to me would make logical sense. And so that's what I would suggest uh that we start at or look at. Um, if there's a way to, to implement, I know I talked to a law enforcement person and stuff that said that, you know, it'd be good if there was a way that we could put education into it, you know, just like, I mean, packs of cigarettes have, you know, this product can cause cancer, you know, with the the effects of um to educate the people that um would potentially be buying this stuff to make sure that they understand the, you know, just all the, all the different potential negative effects that they could experience. Um, if there's any way for us to, to require signage or education or anything like that, um, I would be in favor of that.
I'll look into, I'll look into that one. I, my first impression is I don't think we're going to be able to do anything with that. I think the state is. And they just released some draft rules uh August first, I think is when the, they officially got put out. Um, and I don't remember the Minnesota rule chapter, maybe ninety-eight, ten, I'm don't quote me on that, but it's um, I can forward you guys the emails if you'd like. It's a draft rule, it's a hundred and twelve pages long or something like that. It's, it's fairly long. I was going to print it and I thought, whoa, maybe I won't.
Don't take any samples before reading it.
You won't get through it. But um, it, it does have some uh requirements for labeling. And, you know, labeling THC derived products and labeling cannabis products and labeling at the flower parts and uh medical cannabis has a different label. And there, there are some pretty in-depth requirements already for labeling. I don't, I didn't see any of the, you know, surgeon general warning type labels, but.
And, and you, you triggered that was just uh in general, you had mentioned in your bullet point here about sign standards to limit advertising and that got me thinking more along, you know, in general, um, education, advertising, all of that uh um requiring what we, whatever we can require there. Um, I would be in favor of. And then you had cannabis event licenses and I would not be in favor of those, you know, like for instance, at the dragon boats, you know, to have like an area that they could do cannabis in public. Well, it doesn't just stay in that area. So, you know, there could be kids there and stuff, so I wouldn't be in favor of of allowing that type of a scenario. I don't know if that's what you're talking about or not.
Well, the cannabis event license is actually a little different than that. It's on private property. It has to be on private property. And so there are cannabis events that have been happening in these other states that have legalized cannabis. And so a, a business, a company of I mean, and it could be non-cannabis business. It could be, um, trying to think of a good one to pick on, but um it, it could be my business that if I own a, if I own a business and I have a hundred employees and I want to have a cannabis event on my property and invite the general public or just my employees or other people, I can do that. I have to have a cannabis event um, permit from the state and there has to be a licensed cannabis business, retail business that supplies all the cannabis and it all has to be consumed on site. And it can't be taken offsite, not premises and stuff. It's pretty um laid out. But it's a way for people to gather and share and do all that stuff.
Like a Tupperware party.
Kind of, yeah, yeah.
And then.
Know that those are going to be getting very big, but I think of some of like our music festivals and things like that that are on, on private property. And those cannabis retail businesses, when they've got a cannabis retail business, they're limited to their retail location. There, I don't believe they're going to be doing catering or some of those types of things with this unless they have a cannabis event license. And so that's where, that's where it would come into play.
The, the last one bullet point you had was the low potency edibles. Um, and whether we would want to have a different regulation for quote unquote, low potency ones, I, I would not be in favor. I would want to have it just be the same and try to make it as, as um streamlined and straightforward for our law enforcement as possible and, and just in, in general to make it simpler.
Okay.
That, those are my thoughts, Mr. Chair. Thank you.
Mr. Chair, I'll take a stab at these two uh, business registration similar to liquor and liquor licenses, yes. Uh, or tobacco, uh similar registration, um, like Craig had mentioned. Who conducts compliance checks prior to and after registration? Um, again, I think that's, we gotta, we gotta figure that out. Um, this, we have to do that, that, that's not the state.
The local government will be required to by statute. I'm assuming that we would have the sheriff's department do that, but. Yeah.
Okay, uh, we talked about number of businesses allowed. Location requirements. Yes, there absolutely has to be uh buffers from schools, daycares, residential treatment facilities, playgrounds, et cetera. I would be um in favor of uh increasing that. I know it's a thousand feet uh minimum for a school. Um, and five hundred feet for these others, I, I would be open to increasing that.
We agreed on something.
Yeah. Zoning districts, uh, do we want to create zoning districts? I, I'm not sure. I think that's a whole nother can of worms. Um, uh, I would be, I, for this, no, I don't think so. Um, but, you know, um for a future agenda item, perhaps we could look at the planning commission becoming the planning and zoning commission and then, and then taking a look at doing zoning for, you know, just generally speaking, not just for this. Permits required, we talked about that. Uh, you know, I'm in favor of a either or, whatever. Whatever makes the most sense at the time for the business. Hours of operation. State law prohibits sales from two AM to eight AM. Can further limit, uh, I, I think liquor store hours make sense as well. Uh, sign standards to limit advertising, I would be in favor of uh limiting advertising as it relates to youth, uh, for sure. Cannabis event licenses, I, I would support uh those as an option. And low potency edibles, I do agree that if we can kind of keep those with the same ordinance, kind of streamline things, make it part of the same ordinance, uh I would be in favor of that, but I do know there is some flexibility on allowing some of these low potency edibles to be sold in liquor stores, for example, whereas other products that are of higher THC content cannot be sold in liquor stores. So if there's a liquor store that wants to sell low potency edibles, um, I think they should be able to uh do that if, if they want to do that. Um, so I just don't want the ordinance we create to hinder that option. But I am in favor of kind of streamlining things too. So however we can best accommodate both. Thank you.
Um, thank you. So just a quick question about that low potency edible. Is that like what they're already selling? There's, there's places that sell that stuff now, isn't it? I mean, so that's just kind of like.
Eight or Delta nine. Been for sale already for years. Um, but also it's, these are still um, new products that are being created with a lower THC content.
I apologize, I'm not an expert in this. I don't, I don't have the answer to that.
Looking at the uh model ordinance here that this, that this guide, this uh, the guide that was put out from the office of cannabis management. And uh, I think that's kind of the main thing with this is just allowing um, mostly probably liquor stores, but maybe a convenience store or something. I don't know if I'd be in support of that. Um, but I think if a liquor store wanted to sell the low potency edibles, um, I think they should be able to do so.
Okay.
Well, I, I guess I'm, I'm just going to echo what, what Commissioner Gould and Commissioner Gosvik said. I'm kind of working in that. I think you're kind of hearing that all around that that's kind of. Yeah. Does, is that help? I mean, you getting kind of that guidance that you're looking for?
Very helpful. Um, cause I, I know that this is going to evolve over the next couple of months anyways. But just having some starting point that we at least feel comfortable starting from. Um, so we don't have to wonder every day what's going on and where we're starting from, I think is a good spot. Then we'll adapt and change as needed. Um.
Well, I guess one thing I would just say is that it January first seems like it's a long ways off, but when you only have a couple of meetings a month. Um, I, I think this could, this is actually going to come upon us quickly.
Yes.
So I, are you, are you, are you kind of geared up for being able to get this accomplished by the end of the year?
Um, no, but yes.
I mean, no pressure, Brent.
Right.
Yeah, I mean, there's a number of things that we didn't even touch on, you know, like, uh, I know Commissioner Anderson, I said on the solid waste committee and, and there, again, there's a lot of stuff in this, this deal for solid waste, uh odors and, and uh stuff for, you know, if it is a manufacturing thing, you know, it'd be like, do, do you want a pig farm right next to your house? So, and what's the distance? Do we set, can we set a distance for, for that kind of thing or? Um, you know, security, light pollution, you know, water use, energy use, all kinds of different things that that uh could come up or will come up probably to the planning commission. So it's very possible that the planning commission will come up and say, you know, we need some direction on these items as well.
Well, and I think some of that stuff, I think the planning commission, I mean, my intention at least is to bring those to the planning commission as suggestions. Like odor control is a good example. Some of the manufacturing or indoor grow facilities, some of that stuff. Some of the other states have found that some of those processes start to smell like a feedlot. And so if we need to institute some sort of setback from residential development similar to let's say land application of septage or something like that, I mean, that's, we can put that in a draft ordinance and start from there. Um, lighting is another one where some of the other states have done some of their outdoor grow facilities. They have um basically regulated them to directional lighting that's all aimed downward. None of it can be aimed up in the sky and it can't be going out off the property lines in a, like a direct site. I'm sure we all have businesses that we know of that we drive down the highway and see some pretty obnoxious bright lights that so we want to try and regulate that because these will be light intense businesses. And then um, some of the states also have the outdoor lighting has to be turned off after seven PM. Um, so some of them have, I mean, you know, and we're talking like California where they're growing in January too, right? But um, some of them say the indoor lighting can't be visible from outside the business or off the property after seven PM. So it's not this big glowing warehouse somewhere in the middle of nowhere that everybody's driving by to. So those types of things, I think we'll just probably talk about it. The planning commission, I'm assuming we'll add some of those in. And then it'll make its way to the county board and give direction from there further, maybe.
Just want to make sure the rest of the board was aware of these, all these other issues that, that likely will get brought up and, and we'll have to flush it all out and like save a couple of months from now, that might change.
Yeah, so I'm, I'm kind of walking away from this conversation, assuming we're going to create a standalone ordinance that has all these things that we've talked about here. And then some other things that we didn't talk about and, and we'll um deal with those when we, when we get to this level at some point. Couple months down the road. That looks like.
Sounds good.
Anything else for Brent on that?
Good luck. Thank you. And, oh, and by all means, if you have other things you learn or come upon or if your opinion changes on something, please feel free to share that with me. I'll bring that to the planning commission and we'll have, continue those conversations. Um, I think more input is, is fine. It's just better to, to have that upfront than it is to go through your process and then get that later. So, um, we would always welcome any feedback. So with that, I'll say thank you.
Thanks, Brent, and good luck. That's, that's a big tall task to get that done.
Thanks.
All right, moving on to any other business? Not seeing any then. Let's review the agenda for the upcoming five o'clock meeting.
Chair, I've got the one change right now of being the moving of item nine from the regular agenda to item seven G, the county state eight highway eleven speed study. Um, are there any other under requests to remove anything from the consent agenda at this time?
All good?
Seeing none, that's what we'll move forward with for the regular meeting.
Sounds good. With that, we are adjourned to five o'clock.